Good evening. Today is Tuesday, July 12th. This is the Rhinebeck Central School District Board of Education organizational and regular meeting. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to adopt the following resolution. Whereas the Board of Education has determined that it wishes to fill a vacancy on the board by exercising its option of appointing a qualified person to fill the vacancy, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby appoints Lisa Rosenthal to fill the board vacancy caused by the resignation of Richard Walker to serve effective July 12, 2016 until the next annual election of board members, May 16, 2017, the oath of office to be administered by the clerk and the oath book signed.
So moved. Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Welcome back. All those in favor? All right. That's all except Jenkins and Rosenthal.
No, he just hasn't been sworn in yet.
Oh, he hasn't been sworn in.
No. Okay. So that motion passes.
Okay.
All right. And I'll turn over the agenda to the clerk for the reorganization.
Okay. You could swear her in there.
I'd like to swear Lisa first.
I, Lisa Rosenthal, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of trustee according to the best of my ability.
Okay. I'd like to call the -- to all the annual organizational meeting of the Board of the Rhinebeck Board of Education. I would like to introduce our newly elected board member, Deirdre Delbert, Laura Schulten, and Steve Jenkins, all elected to three new terms. And this time I would like to administer the oath of office to the newly seated members of the board, starting with Deirdre.
Okay. I, Deirdre Delbert, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of trustee according to the best of my ability.
Laura?
I, Laura Schulten, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of trustee according to the best of my ability.
I, Steve Jenkins, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of trustee according to the best of my ability.
Next, I would like to call for nominations for president of the Board of Education for the 2016-17 school year.
I'd like to nominate Mark Fleischauer to be board president for the 2016-17 school year.
My second.
Are there any other nominations?
Are there?
No. It's a legitimate question. You got asked that.
Yeah, yeah.
It's up to them.
Right. So then, all those in favor, I guess, right?
Okay.
That's unanimous.
Here we go.
Motion passes.
Congratulations.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So may I have a nomination for the position of vice president?
I'd like to nominate Deirdre Delbert for the position of vice president of the Board.
My second.
Okay. Any other nominations? Okay. All those in favor?
You can vote yourself.
That's unanimous. That motion passes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Me and Jen. My ladies. We can switch seats in this time. Do that next time. Call your bag.
Vice President. I'm good. I'll have to sign. Do you want to switch seats now or?
Okay. I, Mark Fleischauer, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of president of the Board of Education according to the best of my ability.
I, Deirdre Delbert, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of vice president of the Board of Education of the Rhinebeck Central School District according to the best of my ability.
May I have a nomination for the position of executive committee member for the 2016-17 school year for the Dutchess County School Board Association?
I nominate Mark Fleischauer for that position.
Second.
Okay. Any other nominations? Okay. All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
I think. All right. And we'll move on to the agenda. May I have a motion to appoint Mary Ann Torres as clerk of the Board of Education for the 2016-17 school year?
So moved.
By Deirdre. Second by Lisa. All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion to appoint Christine Nattoli as school district treasurer for the 2016-17 school year with the appointment of Elizabeth Van Kuren as deputy school district treasurer for the 2016-17 school year?
So moved. Second.
All of -- Diane? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion to appoint Carolyn Peck as central treasurer for the extra classroom activities fund for the 2016-17 school year at a stipend of $2,586?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor? That's unanimous.
We could, if you want to do that. We can have that discussion.
I just want to know if we could move to suspend the rules and move to have our visitor make his presentation now. If people don't want to go that direction, that's fine. I just am concerned that it is a long agenda.
All right.
Okay. We don't have to.
All right. Someone like to make a motion?
Well, I'll move to table, well, to suspend the rules from the organizational meeting to move to hearing our visitor discuss the capital project financing.
Okay. Second. All right. All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. We'll suspend the rules and move to the presentation on the capital project. Sir?
Thank you very much. Let's see. What we have, and I think it's in your booklet there, but I'll pass around another card out for you. It's a thick report, but after we get through the first area, the other three are pretty quick to go through. For building projects in New York State, for any of us school districts in the state, we have a bunch of assumptions, a number of assumptions that we'll go through and take a look at, and this may be familiar to some of you that have been on the board, that have been through projects in the past. I know our big projects we had are a while back. So I would make a good refresher for you to take a look at these. So if you would, turn into, it's a very small page four, our first assumption page, and we'll talk about a little bit, this is kind of like bonds 101, school construction 101 course here tonight. So when we have a building project in New York State, every school district in the state receives what's called a building aid ratio. It's kind of like your percentage of how much the state's going to reimburse the project back as. So you'll see our assumption number one, right off the top there, is 36.8%. So that is our building aid ratio. It's based on your property value wealth. So Westchester District, Long Island might be more in the single digits, and some very rural areas in the state might be up to the maximum of 98%, believe it or not. So that's where we fall. And we thought our building aid ratio was further with the document in the back, but that's where we stand right now. It's for a voter-approved project, we can give back up to 36.8%. Now, the second assumption right below that is called bond percentage. So now, for all the dollars that you spend on a project, whether it's a $1 million or a $10 million project, the state will look at your final costs. We have to file what's called a final cost report at the end of the project, and they'll go through each item, each contract amount, each Home Depot receipt, everything, to see what's eligible, what's not eligible. Generally, reconstruction projects should be essentially 100% able, 100% bond percentage, 36.8% amount. Sometimes, depending on how much you're doing, you might go across the aid maximum, a ceiling maximum the state sets. So this school building, elementary school building, has a set maximum. And if you want to spend more than that, that's fine, but they're going to cap your aid at that amount. So again, that's a part when you're doing your discussions with the architect, that is their expertise, and our expertise too, that they need to help us to find that upfront. So right now, we're going to start off with a 95% bond percentage, because it doesn't look like there's anything that I know of today that is going to make that be much lower. For example, let's say you want to do a $20 million project, that building only had a $10 million maximum aid ceiling, then our bond percentage would be 50%. So 50% of all the dollars we spend of the $20 million are going to give aid up to 36%. So you multiply those two together, and that starts to bring down your overall aid ratio a little bit. But that's what we want to find out from the architect upfront, is what are you designing? You know, are we going to do three pools? The state might say, you only get aid on one pool. You can build three if you want, but you're only going to get aid on one. Whatever your scope items are, that's what the architect has to tell us, is it all going to be eligible for aid, or are there some things that they could kick out just based on your design? Now, if the architect says, yeah, everything that you're looking at from your building condition survey looks like it's 100% able, it's good to back off of that a little bit. That's why we're using the 95%, because there's no margin for error. If we use 100, it would be 99%. So it's nice to back off a little bit in case state had kicked something out. So that's one aspect. The second aspect is, as you go through spending dollars, let's say you get to the end, and you have a few dollars left, and you say, geez, let's go do a change order for this and that, a couple more enhancements that you want to do, or maybe you need a new floor scrubber for the hallways, or a mower for the field. You can buy it, that's allowed under your authorization, but the state will say, no aid on that. That's something that should come out of the operating fund. So whatever your reasoning is, you know, it is what it is, but I need to be a little protective there for you on that bond percentage. So that's those first two percentages. Any questions on those? Okay. After that, now I set up a whole set of dates that are dominoes. So if any of these dates slide, that's fine with me, I just, I'll dovetail the financing into whatever the dates are that you have, because the aid flows based on the dates also. So we've picked a date here for a voter referendum, December 6 of 2016, and stated approval maybe a year later in November of 17, but again, that needs to be confirmed with the architect. Maybe their design is going to be so complex, it's going to take them eight to 10 months to design it, maybe it'll take them to state out another eight to 10 months or 12 months to review and prove it. So you guys can override me and say, oh, Chuck, it doesn't look like it's going to be November of 17, it's going to be sometime in 18. So that's fine. Just let me know, because again, all these are dominoes that have to be set up, and then they tip over. And then a certificate of completion is completed by the architect. At what point in time do they think we're going to have that ready? Because again, that's when the final cost report goes in, that's when the building aid starts flowing. And I need the building aid flowing for you to match up with our principal interest payments on the bonds. And if they don't match up, then there might be a problem, because we were expecting some aid to come in, but you still got to make your payment on the bond. Can't be like Detroit. You cannot default. You cannot do that. Okay. So final cost report would be right after certificate of completion at least, and we're leaving a cushion in there, so say a year later, June 20. And that gives you a little extra time to finish spending some final dollars you may have after the architect says, well, the project's essentially complete. You may still have a few more punch list items. It gives you time there. From there, if we have that S and D approval in November of 17, you're going to want to go right out the bid and award contracts and get things going, so I might need to have a borrowing ready for you December of 17. Again, on the early side, maybe we can hold off on that, but I need to plan some numbers here as if you might need those dollars right away. First interest would be six months later, June of 18, and then a principal payment also, June of 18. So we have some debt dropping off, and I'll show you that in a minute, and that's what we want to dovetail this project in, if we can, to that existing debt drop off, to help minimize your levy cap spikes, because obviously that's what we're all dealing with now, is levy cap, and we're all very sensitive to trying to keep that consistent if you can.
Chuck?
Yes.
So for the interest of principal, so that's something that we're going to have to budget for this school year for the late spring of 2016.
17, 18, right. So if the vote passes in December, and you're working on your budget right then, and say January 17, and you say, I need to put something in the 17, 18 budget, because the vote passed, and that's good. You can plug it in because you're trying to maintain levy cap. It's real, that service that you can have. We haven't borrowed anything yet, but you need to budget for it as if we're going to, and we would, assuming, you know, state approval and so forth. And if it doesn't happen, it doesn't happen, but that's okay. If it does happen, you got to have the dollar budget for it. And we've also picked a couple interest rates, 4% for notes, 5% for bonds. Today, notes are like 1%, unless you borrow for a year on a note, which is great. Bonds are about 3%, 2.5, 3% for a 15-year bond, pretty nice. I know we're not making anything to bank, but interest earnings, but at least our borrowing costs are very low. So any questions? That's essentially on this front page. Any other questions on those assumptions?
Just one at the bottom, just to make people aware. This is reconstruction, so state aid can only be over 15 years.
Right.
Okay? You can borrow for longer periods of time if you wanted to, correct?
Right.
But they're only going to give a state aid on 15 years. And that's even what this big project we did. It was partially new construction, partially reconstruction. So we don't, even though it's a 30-year bond, we're only getting state aid over like the first 17 or 18 years, something like that.
Right. And then you size that.
And then you size it.
Those later years, try to keep the whole thing overall level.
Yes, correct.
Right.
So even though, in the future, when the state aid stops, our debt service payments drop to the level as if we were getting state aid, so it shouldn't have an impact on the entire district's operations and the tax levy.
Okay. Next page for assumptions, please. So what Tom and Joe asked us to do is, let's run four different scenarios for you. I know your architect gave you your building condition survey with a whole schmorgasbord of things that you might be considered to do. So as you're going through that whole list of things over the next couple of months, and defining what's in, what's out, what can wait, what needs to be done now, we're going to do three or four different scenarios. So the first one on the left, you'll see, it would be a $5 million bond. That would be our revenue. On the right-hand side, how are those dollars theoretically spent? And a lot of times, again, the architect will go through, view the project budget, and there's two categories, construction and incidentals. So the construction costs are the contractors, the hard costs, they call them. The incidentals are the soft costs. So soft costs would be architect fees, clerk of the works, or construction manager, finance, credit rating, legal, survey, equipment, things like that, site work. So those sorts of things are more soft costs, incidentals. The construction are the hard costs, and they're generally in this 75-25 sort of ratio, might be 80-20, might be 70-30. Again, that's part of what you're going to define with your architect. So just for now, in these examples, we just use 75-25. So out of a $5 million vote authorization, 3,671 would be your construction contracts. About $1,223 would be incidentals. And then we add on also, as part of the voter referendum, something called capitalized interest. So what that is, is again, building aid rule was changed back in '01 in terms of how the state pays building aid. They put an 18-month delay in before they start paying us building aid. So if you get your approval, you want to go write the bid, start construction, get going, and we'll borrow, but we already building aid for 18 months. So somebody has to help us with that. So in this case, we have $105,000 of project dollars that we borrowed that we helped pay the bank that first payment. After that, then the building aid's flowing.
So that's essentially it.
Right. Right at the beginning, right. So we need to budget some dollars for that in order to pay the bank. So it's good to know that, geez, we voted a $5 million referendum, but we're getting $3,600 of hard construction. Sometimes that's a reality check for people. Okay. And then stairs two, three, and four, we ran $7.5 million, $10 million, and $12.5 million. Okay. Any questions there about your budget? This is our accounting 101 right now. Okay. We're having these have to equal expenses. Okay. We have next a couple different pages here that talk about our tax base, what's our makeup of the, your tax base. So you have your six townships, as you know. On the right-hand side, you have percentage of full value, so obviously the majority of the town Rhinebeck, a little bit of Clinton, and then some other four towns are part of school district. So that's good for us to know, and they're all pretty much 100% equalization rate, at least you're two big towns. So that's good, because obviously, when you go to talk about tax rates and dollars, at least people can relay a little bit easier. Just watch out for Hyde Park and Stanford. Okay. Then we have a historical page that shows what the assessments have been in each of the towns. Move it up, move it down, over the last five years, pretty flat. So what we did overall on the next page, when you convert all those on a full value basis, we just left them essentially flat there, $1,676 billion. Now, again, if you know of something that I don't know, and there's a big Walmart coming into town, or a big corporate office park, and you know something's going to come into town in two years, five years, we can factor it in, or we just kind of leave it flat as it is. So again, this is a report for you, and you can help me with it if you need to. Okay. So that sets up our tax base. The next page, nine, talks about some of our existing bonds, and which years we have here. So the little $140,000 bond still had some aid flowing this past year. The gross debt service is all paid off. $1,595 energy performance project back from 2000, has some debt service, gross debt service, and then some state aid flowing, little local share of $83,000. Another energy performance project from 2007, on the bottom-left corner, a little small bond again, and then our refunding serial bond we did a few years back, $17 million. So that worked out very nicely. And the local share, you can see, is dropping there. So that's one of the components, going from $1,039 down to $892,000. That's one of your opportunities coming at you now. Nice to see. Cash project and no debt service.
Could you just back up a second? When you, that file number you just said, going from a million something to 83, we're looking at?
In the local share column?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'll go through that a little quickly. So it's the bottom, the bond out of those three. At the top of it, it says $17 million.
Right. Okay.
And what you have, you're right, there's gross debt service, because last year was $1,874, building aid of $845,000, so local share, the piece that's in the tax levy is $1,029. And then same sort of thing, 16, 17, so Tom's already built that in your budget, that gross debt service, the state aid, the $1,039 is in your levy, but then next year's budget, 17, 18, you're going to drop about $145,000, $150,000 there in local share. So that's great. You can let the levy drop, or if you, and then you'll have to deal with that levy cap-wise, because that's less of an exclusion you'll have next year when you file for that exclusion.
It nets it out. So you think you got savings there? You really don't have savings. The tax cap washes it clean.
Right.
They were very, we were hoping they would forget that part of it, but they worked it into their formula. So.
So that's something that we get to watch going forward. So the next page, then the summary of all that, you can see the yearly change over there on the right-hand side, the $145,000 drop in a few years, another $79,000 drop, little $57,000 increase, then $32,000, $23,000 drops. So that's nice to have that opportunity, and you really see it on the next page, which is the bar graph. So one of the ways that I always like to talk about this component with you, because this is debt service for your buildings. Now, again, you as the school board know that you have a three-part budget, the state likes to talk about it in terms of three parts, so you have admin, program, and capital. So if you can take one of those pieces, the capital piece, try to keep it flat or level, don't have spikes, don't have dips, that's great. Now you can kind of put that on autopilot, and then you get to go focus on program and admin each year in your operating budget. So you can see here, we don't see any spikes, which is good. Nobody's messed up in terms of sizing a bond or anything, everything matches up, and you have this nice dip coming up, a little opportunity here in the next few years. Okay. Any questions on the existing debt? Okay. Next few pages kind of show how we get aid, how it's allocated for this first area. Let's go to page 14, maturity schedule. Now, walk you through this first one a little bit slowly, and then we can kind of bounce through the other three if you'd like. But this first ones here, what we're going to do, you'll see the 17, 18 year, this first year coming up in column C, there's our first principal payment. So that would be June of 18, $145,000, and a little bit of interest, $2,900, because all I would do is I would borrow a little $149,000 note, sorry, $145,000 note, that December, I think it was, have it come due in June, six months later, and we'd pay a little $2,900 interest payment to the bank, and we'd pay off the note, pay that principal payment of $145,000. And therefore, you put this $147,900 into your levy that year. That far right-hand column, that little share, you put the $147,900 in levy, helps keep it level, because it was dropping, I think, $145,000 that year. So this guy would be the first one to take his place. Now, the second year, 2018-19, no principal payment. Again, by the New York State laws, when we do our first borrowing, at the end of that first year of that borrowing, we pay interest, but we do not have to make a principal payment the first year, it's optional. You can or you don't have to. The second year, though, we do have to make a principal payment, so you'll see in column C, $200,000. And that's per series. It doesn't matter on that $145,000, because we only borrowed $145, we paid it off. So that series doesn't exist anymore. But then, the major borrowing in this space, it'd be like a $4,855,000 borrowing, we don't have to make any principal payment on it in the 19 year, but we pay $194,000 of interest. And we need a little help over there in column I, is an offset 40. interest. And we need a little help over there in column I, is an offset, 47,000. That's part of that capitalized interest. So we're going to use some of the money from the project to help pay the bank that year, so that only 147,200 goes into the levy. Again, trying to fill in where that drop-off was. And then kind of dot, dot, dot. Now, then you get into major principal payments, we'll have the interest. But our building aid's starting in column G. So we're up around 305, 303, 277, 291 of a local share. So that's how your maturity schedule gets built. There's, you know, this allows us a little flexibility, but there are state finance rules that, you know, we cannot make like a big balloon payment at the end. There are ways that you have to keep it structured to protect future wars and future taxpayers. So this is not very, anything very aggressive. It's very standard. But it fits in, it's a mechanism that we can use to make it fit in nicely with your debt drop-off. So, let's go to the next page. When you come back to this, we'll flip to the next page, and you'll see that the tan bars there. So that's what goes above our existing blue bars. Those first couple of years, it's nice. You keep it right level there with the existing line where you are now. It's built in a levy. Then in year 1920, 1920 school year, we're a little bit above. And on average, out through the rest of those years, about five cents on the tax rate is what you would call a marginal increase. So this might be the way that, and again, it's a lot of districts do that, but it's the way that you might want to talk about, what's the cost of this 5 million dollar project? If people vote yes. And you say, okay, marginal increase is five cents. Obviously, the real cost of the project is the total tan bar each year. But you've got the offsetting drop. So nobody already remember the drop. So you really want to just talk about, okay, what's the increase? So the next page...
I'm sorry, but it's five cents per thousand of home value.
Correct.
We can't just go out and say it's only five cents.
Right. Right. It's the next rate of the increase. If you're just looking again at building debt, I don't know what the rest of your budget's doing, neither do you. But if people vote yes on this project, we know the other bonds, the blue bonds, that's fixed. That's locked in. They're not going to change, which is good. If your special base grows, then that, like we'll see down there, the 69 cents, 61 cents, 61, 56 cents, that'll decrease. But again, our assumptions upfront was that our tax base would be essentially flat, 1.676 billion or so. So again, it's not being aggressive. It's being pretty conservative out there. Okay, so the next page shows about that five cents on a full-value basis, breaks down for everybody else. So it's essentially the same for Reinbeck, Clinton, Hyde Park. Obviously, they had a different utilization rate. So they'd be more on average town, they're seven cents. Stanford would be around seven cents also. If somebody wants to talk about it in their, in terms of their house in their township. Okay, so the page that you really want to focus on now is our house page. So how does this play out? What's the five cents mean to me? So if I live in, on a full-value basis, doesn't matter which town you're really in, but if I have a house that's 293,700, perfect. I'm right on your average. My cost would be with a basic star exemption, 14 dollars for even a little there. We give the range. So if somebody has a, it's a second house or don't qualify for star, maybe to the senior star, we show those categories too. And a little bit up and down from there. So 14 bucks. That's, so you want to focus on some number, and then you can obviously interpolate off of that. Now, when we talk about the other scenarios, just keep remembering this one is the 14 dollar one. That's the increase. Okay. That's scenario one. Any questions? Or anybody want me to go back and highlight any?
This is very well assessed.
Well, and it's, and it's on a full-value basis. So let's say you're, you were over in Hyde Park, and you've got that average house, but it's assessed in that town at like 200,000. How do you do the math? Let's say it's 200,000. On a full-value basis, it's 293,700.
So it's still going to be that 14 dollars for that house. Because that house, that meeting house, the 293,700 in Reinbeck, in Hyde Park, it's probably 200,000, like you said.
Actually, it is. It's seven cents. So 14 bucks.
So yeah, that's why, if you ever looked at the tax rates, you'll see that Stanford and Hyde Park, they're like 25 dollars per thousand. Wow. Everybody else is like 1582 per thousand. So they have a different tax rate because they're not at full value. But they pay the same amount in the end, though, that in average, as everybody else does.
Right. Because they're kind of under-assessed.
They're under-assessed, so.
Right.
And equalizes that.
Right.
Any other questions on option one? Okay. So, let's go right to, if you'd like. Option two, page 20, is essentially the same type of maturity schedule. Now I'm paying back a 7.5 million dollar bond over 15 years, early 16 or 17 years of principal payments. The building aid in column G flows. And you might ask again, geez, why in column G do I see 118,000, then 236, all the way through for 14 years, and another 118 at the end? Just in case you're trying to keep me on my toes. What happens there is the state pays building aid, like Tom said, over 15 years for reconstruction project. And they calculate on these half-year increments over fiscal years. So depending on when that state had approval comes in, and your final cost report goes in, your aid starts flowing. So if it's January 1, that's different than December 31. And July 1 is different than June 30. So this is just how kind of our dates that we're assuming those dominoes upfront fell. Gives us a half-a-year aid in that first year, 14 normal years, and then another half-year at the end. It's 15 years of aid. Okay, find the house page. So our tan bars are a little bit further above the black line. And the house page here is 39. So 14 to 39. And let's go find the house page for the 10 million dollar example. So that goes up to 60. So 14, 39, 60. Somebody thought it was... And option four, for a 12.5 million project, 83, 83, 83 dollars. So that starts to help you quantify, again, you get all those assumptions. Nothing real aggressive, nothing real ultra-conservative. But I do need to kind of build in those conservative pieces. Are we using 95%? If your architect comes back and says, hey, this project is definitely 100% able, and you want to bump that 95, 96, 97, 98%, you can. It's not going to change these dollars a lot, just because our aid ratios down to 36%. So that's something to ask the architect. Maybe the architect comes back and says, hey, the best you're going to get is 95%. Again, you might want to come down from that to give a little cushion and use 90. So we just need to know there. And the interest rates, again, what we did with the interest rates, 5% for bonds. And I said today, you might be like 3 or 3.5. That's a pretty good cushion, but you're not bonding for two, three years out. So anybody wants to tell me to use a different interest rate?
Well, can you lock in the rate sooner, thinking that interest rates are going to go up before 2017?
Right. The earliest time that we can legally lock in the bond interest rate is after state of approval.
So that was...
2017.
Yeah, so November of 17, I think it was, was the estimate. So you're right. As soon as you get state of approval, you all can turn to me and say, bond it now. We can legally. It may not be very prudent, because you haven't opened bids, awarded bids, and gone through construction. So...
You might have to start paying interest and principal before we're even coming close to beginning state aid payments.
Right.
I mean, you can theoretically go out to the taxpayers, because this was voter-approved, and say, hey, yeah, it's a 6% increase this year, because there's no state aid against that principal and interest payment. In the end, it will wash itself out. But that year, you'd have the authority to do it, because I got a million dollar payment and no offset for state aid. I can legally go out for a million dollars to get that. But it's not going to look good, as far as trying to pass a budget that year. Even though legally, we only need to get 50%, it's still not going to look good. So...
Yeah. And obviously, there's risks, you know, if we buy in early on. One of the big risks that we would find is, geez, you know, you just maybe haven't opened and awarded bids. So you open bids now on a $5 million vote, and bids come in at 6 million. We already issued the bond. Now what do you do? You go back to the drawing board with the architect, and re-bid, redesign, and wait, set you back six months. And hopefully then, when you go to the bidding, you get bids that work, and you're right, you've got bonds, you're paying interest on it, it's sitting in the bank, earning this, paying that. So we kind of prematurely issue the bond. The other thing is, let's say you open bids, and you award it, and you're good, good to go, and say, yep, bids look good, Chuck. Yeah, let's go ahead and bond it. And you get to the end of the project, a year later, and you say, wow, we didn't spend all 5 million dollars. We spent 4 million for. And the board didn't want to do anything more with change orders and anything else. So we bonded the 5 million. So now you got 600,000. It sits in the bank. And we have to use it toward future principal payments, but we're also paying interest on it. Only making this on the 600,000 actually in the bank. So, and they also could leave in some IRS complications with spend down of the tax-exempt dollars that you borrowed. So we try not to, but if you want to, you have the legal authority to do that. So that's a good point. It's a tough balancing act. What's the best time to bond? And is it prudent?
You know the rates are going up. You want to get in as early as you can, but it can cause some issues.
Good questions. Because these will be questions that'll become at you. Because I'll throw them at you. Hey, how are we doing on bidding? How are we doing on the construction? How are the dollars being spent out? A lot of change orders, not many change orders. So we need to keep our finger on the pulse with you as you go through the project. Good questions. Other questions on these? One thing too, just behind the pink piece of paper there, tendencies. Just to show you, again, if you haven't been on the board, it's a little bit of a historical chart for you. This is your building aid ratio bar chart. So let's talk about, down at the bottom, you'll see three colors on the left side. Blue, burgundy, and a tan, I guess, orange. Current selected and billed for, what are those? Current is your current ARWADA aid ratio, the resident weighted average daily attendance. It's like your BOSI's aid ratio. So you'll see wherever the right-hand side, 1617, you're about zero. So that's what the state says, you are very well property wealth-wise, so we're not going to give you any aid, generally. Now, that's, that's good to know, because there are some aids in terms of building aid that are based on that. So if the state said they want to take everybody to current, which has been a proposal once, once or twice in the past, and they say, hey, a lot of districts, you know, your current aid ratio is zero, and one, your building aid ratio is zero. If that proposal comes up again in Albany, you want to try to get that shot down. Because that would take away that building aid. That's millions of dollars for you in this case. The next one that's there is selected. So why is that there? That's kind of a whole harmless. And that's been there since 81, 82. The state said, you can go back and select your highest building aid.
Before I started this job.
And that's really to help some of these districts that were kind of spiking up and down. And we're losing, you know. Maybe they're a property around the lake, Lake George or something, or something in the Catskills. So if they have just their current aid ratio going down, and people are thinking, geez, my building aid was this this year, now it's dropping, dropping, dropping. So they put this in there, so you can select and kind of keep it steady. Now that is an annual reenactment that the state has to keep extending every year. So hopefully, they keep that going. They've been doing it for a long time, but you don't want to lose that. Again, they put out these proposals once in a while to take you to current. You don't want that. In your case, look at the difference there. You'd be losing a third of all your aid on...
It'd be no state.
5 million dollars. So it's, it's a big number. So hop in your car and drive to Albany and try to kill that. And the billed for, this is the, what they use currently to calculate our building aid. So it's, that's the number we get, 36.8. And the boxes in the top-left corner, you can see some of our old prior authorization that you had back from before. There was the big project, Energy Performance Project in '05, and 600,000 project in '07. That was probably an Excel project.
It was.
That one came out, it came out in '06. So now you're all experts on building aid ratios. Again, the way to think of that is, as a layman, is that that's a coupon for you, 36.8% off. You go to the store and say, hey, I need to do a million dollar building project. Give you back 36%. That's pretty nice. Very good old coupon.
Question for you, Chuck. Going back to this, this last we looked at. And you have the tan circles and the blue circles of what the SED's average interest rate is. Now, if I remember how this has gone, you could borrow at 4%, but they're only going to give you 2.125% as the interest rate. Is that correct?
Right. So what Tom's talking about is, back on my assumptions page, I had a bond borrowing rate of 5%. And one that I didn't tell you about was a state assumed interest rate of 4%. That was the very last assumption on that early page. So I built in kind of a 100 basis point pessimistic or conservative cushion. So what does that mean? So when we go to bond, you know, we bonded 5% or 6% or 10%, or 4%, 3%, whatever we bond at, the state's not paying us aid on that. They're paying us on an assumed interest rate, which is the ovals. That's what it's been historically through each of those years. And the oval that gets assigned to you is the year in which you get SED approval. So we don't know that right now, because it's a couple of years out. So I had to make an assumption. So I said 4% for my estate assumed interest rate. So they're going to pay us building aid on our 5 million dollar project at that aid ratio of 95%. At this 4% assumed interest rate, whether we bond at 4, or 5, or 2, or we pay cash, or we bond at 0. You have somebody doing a cash project, and you're getting an assumed interest rate, 4% isn't going to do anything. Kind of nice. So what I had to do is I had to build in kind of a pessimistic cushion here. And what that really means is, okay, let's say we bond at 3. Okay, good. That tells me that we could probably come in about 2% of the state assumed rate, and you're still fine with what we told the public. So we've got that 1% cushion in there. So if we bond at 6, then I know, geez, hopefully that state assumed rate's a 5. So it's just a relationship, is what we're going to... It's one more little technical piece of how the aid flows to you. Back in the old days, back before Governor Pataki changed in '01, they used to pay building aid based on what your bond rate was. So if you were bonding at 7%, they were paying you your 36.8% of aid on a bond at 7%. And if you bonded way well, that's mine too. So now what this does is it sets a state assumed rate across the whole state. Now, you could be Chapala, the AAA, and you're going to bond at 2%. You're getting 4% on a state assumed rate. You know, we don't get much aid ratio, but that's how the differences work. You could be a very, very poor school district down in Cataris County, like a triple B credit rating, and they're bonding at 6%. You know, it's the best that they can access the credit markets at, and they're only getting 4% state assumed rate. Now, they might be getting 90% aid, which is good, but it's that 200 basis points, they're eating locally at interest costs. So that's, that's the fallacy when they come up with that, you know, it's just like minimum wage, you know. It works for some people and not for other people. But once you set an artificial floor or ceiling, you're going to have people that it hurts, and it helps, you know, unfairly, so to speak. So people need that for them.
This is like basic, I guess, but I don't know the answer. So I'm just surprised at the difference, the marginal cost for an average house between the 5 million and the 10 million. You know, it goes up dramatically. Can you just sort of generally explain why that is?
Yeah. And I thought sometimes that question does come up, but when you're talking marginal increases. So let me go find that first bar chart.
It was like from 14 up to 60.
Well, 14, yeah. You're going 14 to 39 to 60 to 83. So it's about a 25 dollar increase each one, or 21 or 23 dollars. So, you know, there's a round in there. But it's, it's about, say, 23 dollar steps for every 2.5 million dollars more. But you're right, this first one's only 14 dollars.
Right.
It's not a 25 dollar step. But that's because you've got the first drop. And it's really just the increase above...
I see.
You're kind of setting a new bar when you set the 5 million, 14. So for every 2.5 million dollars you want to do above that, call it a 23 dollar increase.
Okay, sure.
But it is linear.
I see what you're saying.
To a degree. I mean, again, if you want to do a 50 million dollar project, you could. But at some point in there, I have to look it up. I knew these projects wouldn't be too close to those aid ceilings. You know, and once you go above that, no more 36%. So it wouldn't be a 25 dollar increase. It might be 50 dollar increases.
Right, right.
For every 2.5 million dollars.
Where does that aid ceiling come from? Is that calculated in all of these rooms?
Well, we have. We can look it up. Every building in the state, every school building, high school, elementary school, Chapala, Reinbeck, wherever, is assigned building aid units. They call them BAUs, as kids. So they say, okay, English room, sixth grade English room has a max on it, because you have the correct square footage in the classroom. You get 27 BAUs. So 27, 27, 27. You count up all your classrooms, your instructional spaces, in a gym, in an auditorium. Cafeterias don't generate. I don't think libraries generated. Hallways don't generate. So you have...
There's classrooms.
Square footage, classrooms, instructional spaces. So every building has these categories. They do it on a K6 basis versus a 712 basis, because you have labs, obviously, at that level. And they give you a multiplier, a factor, that... that level. And they give you a multiplier, a factor, that, that, that. So, this building might have a twenty-million-dollar aid ceiling for construction. There's also an aid ceiling for incidentals. So, if you all of a sudden start talking astroturf football field, and redoing parking lots and bus loops, that falls into that incidental category because it's cycling. So, that's why there's a cap on the incidentals. So, you have construction caps and incidental caps per building. So, some buildings are very big, very large. So, it might have a thirty, forty-million-dollar cap. And you can do that. You can do more if you want, but once you go over that cap, you're paying all the local share. So, that's a good question. Now, that BAU count may be different than the physical students you have here. And generally, that's what we found. You know, you might have, this building might be rated for eight-hundred kids BAUs that they've calculated, because it's twenty-seven, twenty-seven, twenty-seven. But, you might only have twenty kids in a class. Might only be five-hundred kids in the building physically. That's okay. You don't have to tell anybody about that, per se. But, as long as, you know, we just want the biggest aid ceiling cap as we can. Now, if you ever went to go do an addition to the building, and you said, well, we want a little more space, a little more elbow room, we want to build three more classrooms, then the state doesn't count inside the building to make sure that, you got some space over here that's unused. Why don't you use that? So, then they'll tell you, we're not going to aid the addition. You can still do it. We're not going to give you aid for it, because we think you can fit the kids in the other classrooms. Good questions. Lot to absorb there, right?
Yep.
Okay, we can come back to this. Let me go through one other document for you briefly. Timeline. Okay. So, if you still want to come back to the other, the finance report, we can do that. But, this is a listing of all the legal steps that we have to, as we're tutoring a project for a referendum to the school, to the community. So, instead of going through all thirty-three steps, let me focus on five of them for you, five key steps. First step that's key for you is thirteen. And it was clear for Tom, Joe, we worked on all of those things. But, as board members, your key step is step thirteen. So, and we'll see a date there of October eleventh. You can do it earlier if you want, but if we want to keep with a December sixth vote, then by your October eleventh board meeting is when the board takes action. Okay, so, at that board meeting, again, it could be a prior board meeting earlier, but if you're waiting until then, you would be adopting your SEER resolution first, which is a state environmental quality review act. And you always have to do that when we're going to be doing borrowings. So, what that means is that the board took a hard look at the impact of Project XYZ, impact on the environment. So, again, are you doing, I think you've lost loop, but now you've got to figure out drainage, and you're in wetlands, and you've got DOT concerns of spilling out of traffic under roadways, all those things. Is there moss on a rock out in the back? Are there spotted owls and danger paths? Whatever it is. So, your architect and your attorney are going to take you through those things. And SEER is broken down into kind of three categories. They call it type one, type two, and unlisted. So, depending on which category you fall into, your project scope. If it's just renovations in the building, it's pretty simple. If you're doing other things, it might get a little bit more complicated. But, keep asking the architect as you go through, what SEER are we getting into? The easy SEER, which they call a short environmental assessment form you've got to fill out, or is it the complicated one where we're going to get into a long environmental assessment form. And we have a coordinated review from other involved agencies, maybe DEC, DOH, DOT, whoever. So, got to find that out. And what you need to do is get to what they call a negative declaration. And that's a resolution that you adopt. And that is step thirteen A. You really would end up adopting. Hopefully, you've gone through all your steps. And you can do it all the same night if it's one of those simple ones. But, if it's a more complicated one, then you'll need to start that process earlier to get it done, done by October eleventh. Okay, so that's SEER. And that has to be done first before the board takes further action. You have to take the hard look at the environment before you then take action. So, taking action is step thirteen B, calling for vote. So, that's why we have to have SEER done. It could be the same night, but it has to be in that order, and you end up, get your SEER squared away, then you can call for the voter referendum. Okay, so that's step thirteen. The next key step for you is sixteen. This is where we then start to publish the resolution, this calls for the votes. We publish it four times in the newspaper. And the first publication there cannot be more than forty-nine days or less than forty-five days prior to the vote. So, the first one's the key one, and then you got publication two, three, and four. Okay, so that's the next key step. Then the third key step for you is the vote, step twenty-one. And there you'll see December sixth. So, again, if somebody's saying, well, why can't we hurry up and keep this moving along? There's these legal steps that we all refer to. Okay, so then if the vote's positive, beautiful, the next key step then for you as a board is step twenty-six. You adopt, then a bond resolution. Because, again, what the voters approve is you to spend the money. So, we, the voters, approve you to spend ten million dollars on the project. Well, thank you. But, and it says, and levy a tax. That's a very key phrase. It's right in the proposition. And it's pretty, you know, benign, pretty small. But, it says, hey, school board, if you want to, go levy a ten-million-dollar tax in next year's budget. You're not going to do that, because that would be a big number. So, what you do is, as a board, then you say, hey, let's finance this over fifteen years or something, or twenty years, whatever it is. So, we need to adopt as a board a bond resolution, which authorizes you to finance the project. So, that's step twenty-six. And the last step, twenty-nine, just publish that, or publish the notice of stop.
The notice of stop.
The notice of stop. So, those are kind of the key steps that you, as board members, go through. It's really that SEER, calling for the vote, getting the publication in the paper, conducting the vote. And then right after that, your next board meeting, let's get a bond resolution to you from the bond counselor, bond attorneys, for you all to adopt. It's a couple of pages long. You can read it. It authorizes you to issue bonds and notes to finance the project. So, I noticed the last steps there, but those are really the key ones for us.
Any more questions?
So, we want to bond, three bonds, one-on-one, and one-on-two.
Yes, very clear.
Very clear, a lot of clear details.
December.
Nice, right?
Nice.
Yeah.
So, what you'll need to do, again, if you want to go with a vote of December sixth, October eleventh is your target date.
Right.
We're July twelfth, so three months. So, march right along with the architect, or have the architect march you right along, in terms of, you know, making some decisions on which items are in or out. And then, once you define that dollar amount, you know, let us know. And the architect will add to the construction items that you've picked, an incidental budget. Usually, they'll add twenty, twenty-five percent, or thirty percent to the construction numbers, the total. And we need to tack on the capitalized interest number. So, if they come up with seven million dollars, you know, timeout, they'll go tell everybody in the public it's seven million dollars, because that might come back at seven-two or seven-three as the vote amount. So, once you get those couple of numbers defined, we'll update the report, so it's down to just the one option for you. And either give it to you at the October tenth board meeting and say, here's what it turns out to be, and it's going to be fifty-two dollars. And I all know then what that amount is. You're good to go with that with the publications in the newspaper. Or, if you want us to come to a September board meeting, say, go through this. Here it is. It's fifty-two dollars. It'll take another couple of weeks to digest it, and then come back on October eleventh and say, yep, that is the scope that we want to go with. Or revise it, whatever you want to do. So, let us know as you go through August. Hopefully, you're starting to define it, come up with a number, because we need a few weeks to update the report. And we can bring it back in September or October. You might have two board meetings a month, maybe three, depending on how much you're moving things along with the architect. Or, you know, if there's too much that needs to be defined, you know, push it out a little ways. No rush. Just a lot of folks like to vote in December, and it kind of keeps you away from springtime vote.
Keep it away from the budget vote.
Right. But, if we are trying to get something as a placeholder in there, and you have to file levy cash March first.
Right.
So, you will want to have had the voter referendum prior to March one at the latest in order for you to say, yep, the vote passed. I need to put one-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand dollars into that seventeen-eating budget. If you don't have the vote passed, we can't really just kind of say, oh, we're going to put one-hundred-and-forty-five thousand in, because no project is authorized. So, you need to have that in there.
Does anyone have any questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Chuck.
Safe trip back.
Thank you.
Going back tonight all the way?
Yes.
All right. Heffson?
Sort of.
Thanks, Chuck. Oh, right, okay. All right, so we're going to continue with the reorg agenda. And Joe has reminded me that we need to cover the leadership positions and committee assignments of the board. So, those are in your packet. I can find it right here.
Where are we?
I got a pile of papers buried.
Oh, yeah.
It's right after the reorg agenda. Right after the reorg agenda are the committee assignments. So, as of this morning, Deirdre Dalberg has agreed to move to facilities, and Lisa will take on policy. And then we have, we have four people signed up for finance and only two for curriculum. Would any of those four like to move to curriculum?
Okay. Where are we?
Yes.
I don't think there's a prohibition against it.
I'll, I mean, I'll move from finance to curriculum. Does that help? Am I?
Yes.
Is that?
That will solve the problem.
It solves the problem.
It's a good committee.
Okay. So, do I have to have a motion to adopt that schedule of committee assignments?
So, and I just, you know, I guess we could discuss this later on when we actually have a negotiating team about the issue that I raised about. Historically, the personnel committee is the negotiating team. So, and I don't know whether you know that and what that means for, you know, time commitments and whatnot, since we will be negotiating a contract with the RTA. So, you know, I have, like, personally, no issue with, you know, keeping the committee the way it is, but I don't know whether that might impact kind of a committee choice. Or, we could always do a negotiating team that has a different makeup. That was just sort of one historical thing, right? I mean, I
Yeah, no, your email was, you know, was right on. I mean, in a perfect world, which we all know it isn't, the personnel committee going into a year when we are going to be opening up negotiations with one of our bargaining units, in this case, the Ryanbeck Teachers Association, where traditionally, the board members who are on that personnel committee are serving a function to a greater or lesser degree. And then we've seen it vary over the last two cycles. In a perfect world, you'd want somebody who's kind of in the middle of their term. You know, they kind of know the lay of the land, but they're not coming off at the end of that year, because it may take more than several months to negotiate a contract. Again, that's in a perfect world. We've had people at various stages of their board service serve in that function. It's, if you're a new board member serving, then you're going to have a steeper learning curve. Regardless of what year in your board service you're in, it can be very time-intensive for a period of at least several months, perhaps even longer than several months, could be years if things don't proceed well.
Let's not go down that road.
It could be. I mean, it wasn't the last time. I mean, it's just, everybody ought to go into it with their eyes open, knowing what they're signing on to with that particular committee, only because we're entering a negotiation cycle this coming school year.
And that being said, when the time comes, I think people's schedules, because that's the other piece, are just, you know, what time people have to devote. So, you know, we already have ideas about kind of repeating, doing it in the way that we did last time, which was actually a much shorter time period. It didn't, I think it was two-and-a-half months or something. So, I just wanted to throw that out there. I'm totally comfortable with this, but I just, that might be something we need to think about later or not.
Better to mention it than not to, and then have somebody like Steve, for example, say, oh, wow, if I realized this is what I was signing on for with this committee, I might not have. But, we've had new board members on the personnel committee and be involved in negotiations. So, it's not like there's, there isn't a precedent with that. Just everybody kind of going in knowing what the lay of the land is. That's so.
We could talk about having David come and talk to the board.
We talked about doing that early.
Maybe after he speaks to people that makes him feel differently, or he wants to do a different committee or
Mm-hmm.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
That's where's in.
Yeah, that's good.
That's okay.
So, I, you know, I think it could work the way it's laid out here.
Me too. Okay. All right, so I move to accept, right, the committee assignments as laid out in our packet.
Okay. All right. All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. All right, so moving on to item four, a motion to appoint Susan McCormick as school tax collector for the 2016-17 school year at no additional cycle.
So moved.
All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. We have a motion to appoint Steve Bankert as claims auditor at twenty-eight dollars and five cents per hour for the 2016-17 school year.
So moved.
Zed.
All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. We have a motion to appoint Thomas Brunell, Assistant Superintendent for Support Services, as District Purchasing Agent, and Joseph Phelan, Superintendent of Schools, as Deputy Purchasing Agent for the 2016-17 school year.
So moved.
Zed.
All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes.
Mark, if I could just make a comment, just for Steve's benefit, all of the, this whole list, they're all pro forma things that we have to do at the beginning of each board year. Hardly any of these change from year to year. You know, what does change is, for example, the hourly rate may be increased over last year. In other cases, like the contract with our legal counsel, that hasn't changed for, I don't know, seven years or so. But, we have to go through these. And they, these have all been vetted by our legal counsel way back, way back in the day. So, we're kind of ripping through these quickly because most of them are representing no change whatsoever. So, yeah. Okay, sorry, Mark.
All right. Okay. We may have a motion to appoint Marvin Kreps as Title IX, Title VII Coordinator, Title VI Coordinator, and Non-Discrimination Complaint Officer for the 2016-17 school year.
So moved.
Zed.
All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. We have a motion to appoint Christine Nattoli, District Treasurer, as additional Title IX, Title VII Coordinator, Title VI Coordinator, and Non-Discrimination Complaint Officer on an as-needed basis for the 2016-17 school year with compensation for related investigations at her hourly rate.
So moved.
And, by the way, if there's any questions or discussion, feel free to raise your hand. We'll do that at that time. All right, all those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. We have a motion to appoint the Director of Special Education as Section 504 ADA Coordinator for the 2016-17 school year.
So moved.
Zed.
All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. We may have a motion to appoint Joseph L. Phelan as Designated Educational Official for the 2016-17 school year.
So moved.
Zed.
All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. We may have a motion to appoint Joseph L. Phelan as Age Coordinator for the 2016-17 We have a motion to appoint Joseph L. Phelan as age coordinator for the 2016-17 school year at no extra stipend.
So moved.
Seven.
All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion to designate the Director of Special Education to attend last chance resolution sessions or mediation sessions required by the IDEA with the authority to execute settlement agreements on behalf of the district following consultation with the superintendent of schools where practicable and notification to the board president or vice president in his or her absence of the contents of any settlement agreement for the 2016-17 school year.
So moved.
Seven.
All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. Okay, so item 13 is a consent agenda, so we're gonna be voting on A, B, C, D, and E all at one time. Is there anyone who would like to remove any of those items from the consent agenda? Okay, so we have a motion to move, to approve those appointments.
So moved.
Seven.
All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion to direct the Assistant Superintendent for Support Services to make payments of monies for investments, interest on bonds as it becomes due, payments to redeem bonds as they come due, checks to cover payrolls and agency account deposits, utility bills, expense payments to employees, and payments under contractual agreement.
So moved.
Seven.
All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. So item 15, again, is a consent agenda. If there's anyone who would like to remove any of those items? Okay, we have a motion to approve those items.
So moved.
Seven.
All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. And again, item 16 is a consent agenda. Is there anyone who would like to remove any of those items from the agenda? Okay, we have a motion to approve that consent agenda.
So moved.
All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion to re-adopt all previous board policies and the code of ethics.
So moved.
Seven.
All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion to approve that the meetings of the Board of Education of the Rhinebeck Central School District be held on the dates indicated on the schedule submitted at 7:30 PM in the high school, middle school, library for the 2016-17 school year, or in alternate locations and/or times as noted on the agenda.
So moved.
Seven.
All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion to adopt the per mile reimbursement rate set by the Internal Revenue Service, which is currently 54 cents, for approved use of personal vehicles on school business subject to the, the change of the internal revenue reimbursement rates.
So moved.
Seven.
All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion to approve the following resolution. Be it resolved at effect of July 1, 2016, through June 30, 2017, the Rhinebeck Central School District will waive the fingerprinting fee of $102 for all new employees who are hired to work less than 20 hours per week or receive a salary of $30,000 or less, except for per DM substitutes. The district will reimburse per DM substitutes for this expense after the completion of 10 days of work and the submission of proof of payment documentation. The district will pay this fee in advance for all others as outlined above.
So moved.
Seven.
All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion to accept the list of New York State certified impartial hearing officers for the, for Dutchess County for the 2016-17 school year as updated by the New York State Education Department in accordance with Section 200.31, 1 of the Commissioner's Regulations for the purpose of conducting special education impartial hearings with compensation of such impartial hearing officers in accordance with board policy.
So moved.
Seven.
All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion to appoint Shaw, Pearlson, May, and Lambert, LLP, Attorneys at Law, as school attorneys for the 2016-17 school year at a retainer fee of $30,000, and such attorney is assigned as investigator for Title VII, Title IX, and other matters for the 2016-17 school year if and as needed.
So moved.
Seven.
All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion to approve all persons and positions required by law or regulation to be bonded, such as deputy treasurer, central treasurer, activity fund, claims auditor, deputy claims auditor, purchasing agent, in the amount of $100,000 per employee per occurrence, $1 million per occurrence for the tax collector, and $1 million per occurrence for the treasurer for the 2016-17 school year.
So moved.
Seven.
All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes.
Before you go on, just a question aside. Do we have a deputy claims lawyer?
No, we do not have a deputy's claim owner. We just have a claims auditor.
But this is just in case we should just...
These were examples of them, right?
Okay, thanks.
Okay. We have a motion to approve the following resolution. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Rhinebeck Central School District hereby appoints Thomas Brunel, Assistant Superintendent for Support Services as trustee, and Joseph Phelan, Superintendent of Schools, as alternate trustee representing the Rhinebeck Central School District for the Dutchess County Workers' Compensation Cooperative, effective July 1, 2016, to serve in such capacity until the appointment is rescinded by the board or another individual is appointed in his place.
So moved.
Seven.
All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion to approve the following resolution. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Rhinebeck Central School District hereby appoints Thomas Brunel, Assistant Superintendent for Support Services as trustee, and Joseph Phelan, Superintendent of Schools, as alternate trustee representing the Rhinebeck Central School District for the Dutchess Educational Health Insurance Consortium, effective July 1, 2016, to serve in such capacity until the appointment is rescinded by the board or another individual is appointed in his place.
So moved.
Seven.
All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. And that is the end of the consent, or of the organizational agenda.